City Council tonight is Tuesday, June 18th. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask anyone else in the audience who is recording the meeting to please stand and identify themselves for the record. Is there anyone here wanting to do that?
Speak on the record, call a comment.
Not yet. Thank you. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance by Counselor Fleming, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Clerk, would you mind conducting the roll call?
President Kushner is absent, Counselor Boishman absent, Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Here.
Counselor Donnelly absent, Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Vice President Green.
Here.
Counselor Caddy absent, Counselor Squailia.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Counselor Zarella.
Here.
Thank you. Public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on a matter on the agenda may do so but not for more than two minutes. If you are addressing public hearing petitions, you will have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the number, the item number on the agenda you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak now at this time? Hi, Mr. Doohan.
I'm Mark Doohan from New View Communities, 470 Main Street. So, you notice we have a lot of people here tonight. We had actually planned, some of you may have attended, we had a regular community forum at the Fitchburg Art Museum about the Fitchburg Arts Community at the beginning of May, and we had chosen randomly this night for our first community advisory council meeting to talk about how to design the Fitchburg Arts Community. We had no idea that the 40R was going to come up before the agenda tonight. So, we were meeting, we're literally combining two meetings and everybody changed schedules to come here for the meeting. So, we're in support of the 40R district, not only because it supports the Fitchburg Arts Community, which I can say is the roof is on, we've, the contractor has all done, we're getting ready to go through the permitting stage now, things are looking good there. But the other reason why we're supportive of it is not only will it help us permit our project, but it will help a lot of other projects in downtown, and we think that's one of the keys to filling up the vacancies, the vacant stores downtown, is to have more people living down there. New View has 31 units on Main Street, and I think the more we can create a community downtown in that area, the better it will be for our residents who are there already, and the better it will be for, to help fill those vacant storefronts. So, thank you so much for all of your support for the Fitchburg Arts Community, for your unanimous vote on that, and if I can answer any questions, I'm happy to do so.
Mr. Doohan, I just have one question. Is this in relationship to petition 7619, the smart growth overlay?
So, there's two petitions that reference the 40R zoning, so there's the recessed hearing and the ordinance, and it would be the latter, petition number.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Again, thank you all for your support, and I also just want to say that when we've, well, the city's just been incredibly supportive, so thank you very much, I'll be good at that.
Thank you, and I would like to say thank you for everyone who came tonight and support. I see all the green stickers, so love those. Thank you for making the effort to be here. Good evening, Mr. Capasso.
Good evening, Counselor Green, city councilors. My name is Nick Capasso. I'm the Director of the Fitchburg Art Museum at 185 Elm Street in Fitchburg. I've come this evening on behalf of the administration and the trustees of the museum to speak in support of the Smart Growth Overlay District, item 190.19 on the agenda. This overlay district is vital to the progress of the Fitchburg Arts Community. You all know the merits of this program. We've all been working on this together with the city, with New View, and with Reimagine North of Maine Project for over six years now. The museum and New View have invested an enormous amount of time, money, and staff capacity on this project to help move our city forward, and the city itself has invested $1.6 million to date on the fire repairs to the BF Brown Building. So, we would very much appreciate your support in helping to continue to pave the way for this important project, and I thank you in advance for hearing me.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you. Hi, Mr. Bowen.
Hi, good evening. I'm Joe Bowen. I am resident of Fitchburg, 53 Fairview Street. I'm also the Chair of the Fitchburg Cultural Council. I have just something very brief to say. We had our cultural council meeting this afternoon, speaking specifically on the 190.9 40R zoning item on the agenda, and I just wanted to let the councilors know that we reviewed the results of our creatives meet and greet event that we had in May, where we polled the artists and creatives community for what sorts of things they would like the city to be involved with, and one of the things that they had requested of the city is that they feel that there is a need for affordable studio space, and obviously as supporting the Fitchburg Arts Community, which is designed specifically for that purpose, I just thought it would be useful for me to share with you what the creatives think and in their support of the affordable studio space, and I think the zoning ordinance will certainly get us closer to meeting that goal. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Oh. Hi, Mr. Brooks.
My name's Calvin Brooks. I'm city auditor for the city of Fitchburg. Kind of can't believe it, but in less than two weeks, we will end fiscal year 2019 and start fiscal 2020. One of the hard and fast rules that the Department of Revenue has is that any appropriations from free cash has to be completed by June 30th. After June 30th, free cash goes away until it's recertified sometime in the fall, and for that reason, I'm asking that the city council suspend the rules on orders number 179, 180, and 181-19. The departments that are involved with these orders are here and can speak to them. Thank you.
Move suspension of the rules on the requested orders?
I have a motion second for suspension of the rules on 179, 180, and 181. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi, Ms. Davis.
Good evening, councilors, mayor. We are here to talk about the library contract, which is 179-19. So, the total proposed appropriation is $39,888. This is for the first year, for the retroactive wages, and then just the costs of the contract. I am very happy to say, this is, not that all the contracts weren't pleasant to negotiate, I'm very pleased with this particular contract, not to go into a great deal of detail, but certainly with the support of the mayor, we were able to cut the first four steps off of their matrix, which means we're able to bring the library staff a little bit closer to the competitive and comparable wages that they greatly deserve, you know, within this contract cycle. So, one few more questions?
Motion to approve 179.
Second. I have a motion second to approve 179-19. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Swasky.
Good evening, councilors. I think you'll be seeing a lot of me this evening, but first, I'd like to reference petition or order 180-19, the request for $200,000 from the Community Development Department for demolition. We're looking to match that with $345,000 in community development funds to go towards the same in our year 45 CDPG allocation. It will be going towards a number of projects. There's still some work on the, our Board of Survey team, which goes out and basically votes on the respective properties, and then our building commissioner makes that final determination of which properties will qualify, but essentially, we're looking at about six to eight properties. The biggest one within this year's program is likely to be 617 Water. You might know that as the Northland or manufacturing building, as you're driving into downtown Fitchburg on Water Street, it's on your left-hand side, right before the vacant lot, the former other side lot, and right after the self-storage facility, and that's a large building and has some serious environmental deficiencies, and it's going to be a tough one to take down. So, we also think it'll be a one that will have a huge impact on that corridor coming in, in terms of blight reduction, and eventually turning that into an economic development opportunity, as that is currently a city-owned property, and we want to make sure we're sending the right signals, particularly in our gateway corridors, to other businesses throughout that corridor that we've got to revitalize and clear the blight within corridors such as that, without further ado.
Thank you for that. Counselor Squailia.
Mr. Swasky, the 617 Water Street, wasn't that on the request for proposals that we put out recently for rehab?
That was not one of the items on the request for proposal, reason being it has some environmental issues. We're currently working with the Redevelopment Authority and their EPA Brownfields Program on doing that sort of base level assessment work, so we didn't put that out at that time.
So, it was a, it was a Brownfields grant that I'm thinking of for that?
Probably.
For that property?
Mm-hmm.
And when will we know what the list of properties to be demolished approximately?
We should know within a week or two, with the caveat that basically how this works is with privately owned properties or with publicly owned properties, city-owned, it's not really an issue. If it's our property, we can demolish it and take it down. With privately owned properties, there's a bit more of a process that's involved. So, basically, a board of survey convenes, it's Chief Roy, Lenny Lacso, Mark Barbadoro, and then I wrote, and Tony Tessi, who's the disinterested party, and they make a judgment as to what does or does not qualify as a property that's dangerous to life and limb and is open to the weather. And then from there, Commissioner Barbadoro makes the final determination, and he actually sends out a letter to the property owner stating, "Your property has been, you know, considered dangerous to life and limb and/or open to the weather. Here are some things you need to do to remediate the issue." If property owners do actually follow the directions laid out in the letter and take care of all the issues, some of those properties could fall off the list. If they neglect in those duties, then it would remain on the list. So, short answer is, two weeks, we'll have a pretty good idea, but it's a bit up in the air in terms of what the angle looks like.
And for the bidding for the demolition, when does, does that go out on a yearly basis, or does that go on per project? So, this next round of demolition, will we put out the bid? Did we already put out the bid?
Good question. So, generally, how it works with economies of scale, it's good to put them all together in a package, and we generally do it once a year. Last year, that bid went out late summer and the work began in early fall, and we suspect to follow a similar timetable. So, basically, if council allocates the money today, we could, once we receive that final list of properties, be authorized to begin asbestos abatement work, basically making sure that we've got all of our environmental, we know all the knowns, unknowns currently about the environmental asbestos impacts, et cetera, and then that will feed into the final package that we put out to bid.
Thank you, that's all.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
How much money would this total, since you came on, for demolition between CDPG and city money?
Last year, it was a roughly similar amount, about $550,000, and that was actually the only one under my watch. So, prior to that, I'd say it's roughly, we've been on level, if not a little bit higher funding the past few years, so about, over the last three years, this would put in about 1.5 million.
So, there was also FRA money too, though?
Correct.
That we received from them a few years ago.
In the round previous.
Right, so we're close to about $2 million in reduction of blighted properties.
Correct.
Which I think is unheard of in the last 10 to 20 years. So, the six-day properties that you will identify, 617 being one of them, which is owned by us, which we shouldn't have an issue with, if we can get that list potentially, potential list, when it becomes available, that would be helpful. I just wanted to point that out, that there's been a significant attack on blight in the city in the last three or four years. Prior, when I came on from 2008 until about 2014, I think all we ever spent was what we did in CDPG, and it was maybe $100,000, $200,000 if we were lucky. So, there's been a concerted effort to try to attack that issue, so I'm glad to see we're attacking the entry points. I know we did so on South Street as well. There was a house right across from the doctors' offices that we took out.
Right.
So, I want to thank you and the mayor's office for these funding appropriations, because residents love to find out that we're attacking blighted properties, to attack that negative perception of our city. So, I will wholeheartedly support this use of free cash. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your continued support.
Motion to approve 180-19.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 180-19. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All righty, now, on to 181-19. This is going to be an appropriation for the remaining easements that we need to purchase for the Twin City Rail Trail. We had a little bit of a hiccup in that when I came to you last, I requested $30,850 of that to cover appraisal, appraisals, to figure out what the easements would cost, and then the balance to cover the purchases of these easements, which are primarily short-term, five-year easements in nature. When I made that ask, there was an assumption that the lone permanent easement for the project, in other words, the only easement of any value was to be donated by the property owner, which is right in the vicinity of the Fitchburg Green Tower, if you're familiar with that, or right at Fifth Street. And basically, since then, there were some hiccups in the refinancing of that project. The property owner doesn't feel like he can move forward with the donation, and ultimately, when the final appraisal came through, and I say final, I mean even after your letter, it changed, what we're seeing today is final, 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 I promise. But the final appraisal came through even higher at $60,600, so that really is the bulk of the request today. And actually, I had asked for $62,700, and that was because I wanted to make sure I was asking for, if I came to the council, less, not more. And now, finally, once we have all the appraisals done, and we have discussed with MassDOT what, which easements we do need to purchase, which easements we don't need to purchase, we had a list of 12, we brought it down to six, and the final number is actually, I guess if I would suggest an amendment here, I don't need all the money I'm asking for, basically. So, I'd asked for $62,700, really, all I need is $57,000. I'd be happy to have it all, don't get me wrong, but just a suggestion there to amend.
Motion to amend $57,000 as requested?
Second.
The titles have been paid for already, the titles were.
Has the title work been paid for and done on the, on these properties?
Yes.
It's been paid for, okay.
So, I have a motion second to amend 181-19 to read, appropriate the sum of $57,000 charged and credited to Community Development for rail trail account, the expenses for the purchase of easements along the rail, the rail trail. Counselor Squailia.
Just to clarify, if we amend this to $57,000, that's all that you need for this, or will you be coming back to us for an additional appropriation?
This is it. So, this is phase one of the project, which, which takes it all the way to that Fitchburg Green property, essentially. Phase two will require a few easement purchases. We've really worked it down to what I think to be, and I hope to be, an insignificant amount, but that will be in the second phase. It'll probably be somewhere similar to what I'm asking for today, but that won't come for at least another year, if not more.
Okay, thanks, and I just want to say that the 617 Water Street was on the original city property, request for proposals. That's what I was thinking of. Thank you.
Oh, the original writing.
I have a motion and second to, to amend 181-19. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve 181-19?
Second.
I have a motion second to approve 181-19 as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. I don't like to be a rule breaker, but I have to request one more suspension of the rules this evening, 185-19, to accept and appropriate the Mass Development Brownfields Grant in the amount of $250,000 from the Brownfields Redevelopment Fund.
Motion for suspension?
Second.
Motion second for suspension of 185-19. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Speaking on the motion, go ahead, Counselor, or Mr. Swasky.
One day, maybe.
Don't do it.
So, basically, you know, we received this grant in mid-May. Generally, how this stuff works is it, you take a long time working out the scope with the consultant and the funding source. They're moving at a much quicker pace, and I suspect it has to do with the end of fiscal year deadline that the state also follows, and they reached out to me yesterday in an email and stated that they needed to have a signed contract by Friday of next week, and we just agreed to a scope, you know, like five minutes ago. And, you know, we're trying to put together all the funding sources we can to make this project work. There's a lot of environmental work that has to happen at the steam plant. We also have a $60,000 grant from the Fitchburg Redevelopment Authority that's for assessment work, to figure out what we need to do for remediation at this site. So, in many respects, the scope that we're submitting to Mass Development, they fully recognize and expect it will change after this assessment work happens, but they still need us to sign something next Friday, because that's the end of the fiscal year. So, I'm, I'll take questions from here, I suppose.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
This 250, is this closing the case?
I would like to think so. I think a lot of that will be determined by the Redevelopment Authority's supported work over the next few months, where they're basically going to be doing a lot of assessment work to figure out where the source of the NAPL is coming from, basically, that petroleum product that, it's, you know, and it's a significant enough amount to cause concern. We're certainly containing it with booms, but it's not, we're not talking about just flows and flows of petroleum product into the river. It's being contained, but we want to make sure we've identified the source, we removed the source. I would like to think with all this money we're putting into it, we'll reach an endpoint, but you never do know with certainty with these projects.
So, the money we've appropriated for, it feels like 10 years now.
Yeah.
Has only been to remediate the spills, clean them up.
It's been like a, not even remediate, I was, the Band-Aid, yeah. I'm trying to pull off the Band-Aid.
This 250 is the most I've ever seen us appropriate at one time. Usually, it's 20,000 here, 40,000 here, this is 250,000.
Mm-hmm.
So, what is that going to cover?
So, again, and then there's the 60,000 from the Redevelopment Authority, and that's really what we're going to be leading with over the next few months. The Redevelopment Authority is going to be doing document reviews of all the previous site plans at the steam plant itself to figure out, are there pipes underground that may be snapped and, you know, they were never removed over the demo process?
So, that's the 60, and then, and then what's the 250 for?
The 250 could go towards a couple different things, but I can tell you that the main one, the main goal here is for them to dig out a trench, basically.
Yep.
Along, the, parallel to, to the retaining wall, but not too close so as to compromise the structure, and basically conducts some dewatering, dispose of the compromised substances, basically, and hopefully, through that trenching, identify where the source is coming from, and basically stop that petroleum product from leaking at its source, but first, they have to identify where the source is coming from. And it could be an entirely different strategy, depending on what the assessment of the Redevelopment Authority is.
Right, so we're going to actually, for once, do a full-scale assessment on where the leak is coming from, and then mitigate it or stop it with this 250, we hope.
We hope.
If that 250 is not enough, and since Mass Development's giving us 250, is it fair to assume a good probability that we can go back to them for additional funds, or is this it from them?
I don't know.
We have to bear the cost.
I'm not sure I'd say it'd be fair to assume. I do know that they have committed 500,000 in the past towards the initial demolition of the project.
Yep.
And they have to receive board approvals for anything over a million, so now we've got 750 involved. I think it gets more complicated if we were to ask for anything over and above the $1 million range. It might be fair to say we could get slightly more, but I do think that over the past few years, we've been putting anywhere between $50,000 to $75,000 just to put on a Band-Aid, so even if the city, you know, in the future were to have to contribute an additional amount to take us to the finish line, as it were, it's money well spent in the, in the long run.
I agree.
I hope we don't get there, and I hope there are other sources.
When will we, last question, when will we know? Hopefully, we can have maybe a presentation, but when will we know when the FRA is completed with their assessment, what the findings are, before that 250 is spent? Because I'm assuming at that point, once the assessment is done, we'll be able to ascertain at that point if that 250 for Mass Development is enough to cover the resolution?
I'd be happy to present to the council. I know that the Redevelopment Authority will finish their scope of work by the end of September, because they have to, because they're meeting a different fiscal deadline. But at that point, I'd be happy to present to the council where we're at, and basically what, what steps we have in front of us.
But you'll be, we'll be able to know after that September deadline what, what we're looking at here for final cost?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion to, I'm sorry.
Counselor Squailia that wants to speak, that's all right.
You know, when, on the other side of cost, there's the timeline. You noted in here, returning the property to its, to the tax rolls, and then you noted a words like, "In the future," do you have any timeline at all on what you think will finish this property?
The timeline is, I guess I'm a bit cautious throwing those out, because I was a little bit more aggressive six to eight months ago. I think the, the scope that we have from our LSP for this work, admittedly, it's a very cautious scope, but they say about 18 months from, I guess, the, the last few weeks. So, we're about 18 months out, I would suspect, from, from getting it out. But again, that's hopefully worst-case scenario. I would like to see it back on the roll sooner, but.
So, you're saying worst-case scenario, we're 18 months out from approximately today to putting it on the tax rolls and getting it cleaned up, possibly?
Well, 18 months out to remediating and being ready to have a next step conversation of, going through the whole process. That's where I would like to be.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve 185-19?
I have a motion and second to approve 185-19. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Motion for suspension on 186-19 and 187-19?
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules 186-19 and 187-19. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have, hi, Mr. Ellis.
Hi, how you doing?
Good.
My name's Scott Ellis, I'm the airport manager, and I'm here to speak to you tonight about two items. The first is 186-19. It's a grant from the Department, Massachusetts Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division, in the amount of $1,912.80 for the purchase of environmentally friendly landscaping equipment. I asked for the suspension of the rules, because this is time-critical. The state has to disburse this money by June 30th. This is 100% funded, there's no local share, it's entirely from the state, so I really don't see a downside in accepting free money from them.
Can you just explain what environmentally friendly landscape equipment would be?
Most handheld landscaping equipment is like a, like a weed whacker, it's a two-stroke engine.
Okay.
You mix the gas and the oil, and it belches out black smoke even when it's running properly. The state wants as many agencies to get away from that, and they're willing to pay for the purchase of battery-powered. It, the, I believe there's five or six different pieces of equipment, they all run off of the same 40-volt lithium-ion battery. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a set that can be expanded upon, and they just want to make the air a little bit cleaner.
Great, thank you.
Motion to approve 186-19?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 186-19. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The second item, 187-19, is a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of $13,832,100. This is the big one for the, the runway repaving and expansion. We were prepared to go through the normal channels, we received word from the FAA. We were prepared to go through the normal channels. We received word from the FAA on Monday that if we could get this approved and sent back to them by June 25, we would qualify under a quicker funding source, which means we'd be able to get the money from them and we'd be able to start the project one or two months sooner than we had originally anticipated.
Thank you. Counselor DiNatale?
When is the, when is this component of the project going to be finished? What's the timetable?
We're looking right now, it's very weather-dependent, but right now, we're looking at 20, late 2020.
Late 2020. And is this, is this going to bring it to fruition?
Yes.
So by the start of 2021?
Yes.
We hope to be back in business?
We'll have the 5,000 feet. We'll have the new approaches, and this is, this is what we've been, we've been aiming for.
Thank you.
Counselor Squalla?
Is there a planned shutdown for the runway for airplane traffic, or will areas be open for landings?
The airport won't remain open. Right now, we have the crosswind runway, which is eventually going to go away, but they're allowing us to keep it open long enough until this project is completed. The project will be in several phases. We're basically going to pave one half of the runway, the other half of the runway, and then the entire airport will close in early 2020, spring 2020, for approximately 45 days while the intersection is paved and the portion of the crosswind runway is removed.
Okay. Thank you. I have questions that I was asked to read from Counselor Boschman, who was unable to attend for personal reason. He says, "Good evening. I'm sorry I couldn't make today's meeting. I have a few questions for Mr. Ellis. This loan order over 750,000." Actually, he says, he wanted this from Mr. Brooks. Is he here? Well, yes, Mr. Brooks. "This loan order over 750,000. My question to you, is it going to be paid back to the taxpayers of the city?"
Well, this isn't, this item, 187-19, isn't for the loan order. This is just for the federal portion. 188-19 and 189-19 cover the state portion in, excuse me, 188-19 is the state portion, and 189-19 is the, is the loan order. That's going through the normal channels. That's going to finance. This, what I'm speaking on tonight is simply the federal grant.
And if we're accepting the federal grant, it's understood that we'll be taking out the $15 million loan order, correct?
Yes.
So.
I'm sorry, what was the question again?
For the 750,000, or approximately 768,000 that the city will be approximately paying the 5% of the entire project, will this, the airport be paying this loan order back to the city, or is this money a city loan and to be paid for by the city?
At this point, it would be paid for by the city.
Okay. Counselor Boschman says to that, "As you are all aware, this whole project is going to cost the taxpayers well over $1 million, and the fine people of Pittsburgh will get very little, very little out of it. So, Mr. Brooks, my question to you, is it fair to say that once again, the taxpayers pay and the airport gets to play?" That was Counselor Boschman's question. I don't know if you want to answer it.
Point of order, Chair, is it appropriate that we have councilors speak by proxy? There is a motion entitled "Request to Read Papers" that would be in order. It requires, let me check. Either unanimous consent or a majority vote.
Move to read papers.
Forgot to check.
Of Counselor Boschman.
Does require a second.
Motion to read papers from Counselor Boschman due to his mother passing away this morning and him not being able to attend.
I believe it's debatable. Can we please, can I, can I make a motion that the communication from the council be placed on file, entered into the minutes? That would be in order?
Second.
On file, as a communication.
It's a communication.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all.
Counselor Zarella?
Yeah, we'll need the communication.
Oh, yes. Do you need it?
We'll, we'll get the communication from you?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Zarella?
I just wanted to ask, did you also wish to receive a suspension of the rules on 188 or 189 because they're both relating to the same matter?
The second item is a loan order, which requires two-thirds vote or eight people voting. So.
Gotcha, yeah, we don't have enough.
188-19.
Is it desirable? I just wanted to know.
I won't have to come to you before you again. So if, it will expedite things. Yes.
All right. If there's no, if there's no urgency to it, then I'll, I'll leave it to be taken along with the loan order, but.
Move to approve 187-19?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 187-19. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Well, welcome back.
One last item. I'd like to speak on 76-29-19, the planning board item. And I'm just requesting that be remanded back to the planning board. The planning board had made a recommendation, and the hearing was not formally closed, so we'd like to return it back to them.
Move, send, to send 029-19 back to the Pittsburgh Planning Board.
I have a motion and second to send 029-19 back to.
Do we need to open the hearing?
Okay, we'll.
When the hearing opens.
Yeah. Okay. We'll do that at the hearing.
Got you.
Okay. If there are no other suspension of the rules, we would love to continue with the agenda. So now we will hear oral report from the Appointments Committee. Counselor Zarella, please.
Records?
Oh, I'm sorry, records report. I'm sorry.
Madam President, we have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order. Will the committee on records report be accepted?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Communications from His Honor, the mayor, an appointment letter for the new DPW Commissioner to be placed on file or sent to the Appointments Committee. Okay. Reports of committee. Counselor DiNatale?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Committee met on June 11, 2019. I want to thank President Kouschmarik for filling in for me in my absence. The, there are so many orders here. I would just report, every order was adopted by the committee, 167-19. The first one was amended and adopted. So that in a nutshell is the report. Motion to approve the report of the finance.
Move to divide the question to take out 177-19.
There's no second on that.
It does not require a second.
It does require a second.
Article four, incidental motions, 24, division of a question. If a series of independent resolutions relating to different subjects is included in one motion, it must be divided at the request of a single member. Which request may be made while another has the floor?
Division of a question, section 27, standard descriptive characteristic number four must be seconded. Characteristic three out of order when another has the floor.
That's 27, where, where there aren't a series of independent resolutions relating to different subjects.
Madam Chair, I will second it to avoid law war three. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion and second to remove 177-19 from the Finance Committee report. Speaking on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept the committee's report on 177-19.
I must recuse myself for this?
So. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 177-19. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we move on to this. Yes, okay. Moving on, recess public hearing, 029-19, "Fitchburg Planning Board to amend the Fitchburg zoning ordinance by amending the table of principal uses concerning medical offices and to further define different medical and medical office use per vote of the Fitchburg Planning Board, January 8, 2019." Yes.
I don't believe we've disposed of the remainder of the committee report yet. We took a vote to divide the question and a vote to approve. Motion to approve the rest of the Finance Committee report, separated from 177-19.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the Finance Committee report up to now and including 177-19, or up to 176-19. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, so. Do I hear, do I open the hearing to resume that? Okay, so I declare the hearing resumed. And now we've had a, now we've had a request. Yes, now come up, Mr. Skarowski.
We're going to continue the hearing, but it's going to get remanded.
I have one quick, could I just have a word with the. Yeah, we're going to take just one moment. Okay, and now speaking to that, I think the city solicitor is just going to speak to the eight so that they can remand it. Oh, okay.
As general law, Chapter 48 requires a two-thirds vote for a zoning decision to change ordinance and, but to commit it, I'm determining that we just need a simple majority. So I believe that this body can recommit this matter back to the planning board pursuant to Director Skarowski's request.
Motion to send 29-19 back to the planning board.
I have a motion and second to send 029-19 back to the zoning, zoning or planning?
Planning.
To the planning board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we want to continue this hearing now?
Yes, because we don't want, yes, we also want to continue.
Motion to recess the hearing on 76-19 due to lack of a two-thirds majority present?
Continue, continue.
And continue? Continue?
Yes, my apologies, continue.
Okay.
Can we get the date, sir, from July 2nd?
Yes. Continue to July 2nd, please.
Is that, is that in a motion?
Yes.
Okay. And, thank you. So I have a motion and second to continue the recess public hearing, 076-19, to our July 2 council meeting. Counselor DiNatale?
Are they even meeting by the second?
You need the next meeting.
Well. Are we speaking on 29-19 or 76-19?
76-19. Are they even meeting by the second?
Planning board has already submitted their recommendation for the smart growth zoning. They've approved it unanimously, so there are no further planning board.
They don't have to meet.
Suggestions needed on that end. For 29-19, it doesn't need to go back to the planning board.
And we did that. Okay, so I'm good.
Counselor Zarella?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. The reason we're moving 76-19 is simply because we don't have enough votes here tonight to pass it.
Nope.
Okay, so is now, do we close it, or are we just?
No, continue it.
Okay, so we're continuing both public hearings? Okay. And now we got.
That was 29, was sent back to the planning board, correct?
Yes, and then we voted to send.
Well, you can't, okay. So we need to. Treat 76 separately. You've got to reopen the hearing at 76 as well. We need a vote to continue to July 2 on 29. We did that.
We did that? Or we need to do that?
There's a motion pending to continue 29-19 to July 2, and the gentleman, Counselor DiNatale, had inquired whether or not the planning board will meet prior to the July 2 meeting.
We're on 29-19. That's a separate hearing.
We have an opening hearing for 076 at this point.
Right. Okay, so I have a motion and second to continue to July 2.
29-19.
76-19.
We haven't opened the hearing.
29-19. So I'll just do that again. I have a motion and second to continue 029-19 to July 2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and I don't have to, okay. All right. Recess public hearing, 076-19, "Fitchburg Planning Board to amend the Fitchburg zoning ordinance by revising Section 181-87 Smart Growth Overlay District in its entirety and replacing it with a new Section 181-87." I now declare the hearing resumed.
Motion to continue 76-19 to July 2.
I have a motion and second to continue 076-19 to July 2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Make a motion, make a motion to send 182, 183, 184, 19, and 188-19 and 189-19 to Finance Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 182, 183, 184, 188, and 189 to Finance Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
You can do that one.
Okay. Ordinance 155-19, "Amending Chapter 21, Section 18 of the Code of the City of Pittsburgh by adding a community development revolving fund."
Move to its third and final reading. Enrolled, ordained, and advertised?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 155-19 to its final reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
This is now the next one. Just make a statement that it can't be voted on because it requires eight votes. It's a zoning matter.
Okay. Next before us, ordinance 190-19, and that needs to be held because there's not eight voting members.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and second to hold 190-19. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Move 190-19 through 193-19 be sent to their respective committees.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 191, 192, and 193 to their prospective committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
One opposed, Squalla?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Sure, of course. Madam President.
I just wanted to extend our thoughts and prayers to Counselor Boschman on the loss of his, his mother today. And we wish him and his, and his family all the best and through these very difficult times. We're praying for you, Paul, and your family. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.